Thank you for being here with us this morning. This is something that we now do every two years. Hopefully, that doesn't happen any more often than that, as opposed to the annual that it used to be. So it is a little bigger deal than it used to be because it's less often. And I'm glad that you are here to share it with us. I want to welcome all of you and particularly recognize our city charter officers, city manager Cynthia W. Curry, city clerk Kristen Bryant, city attorney Daniel Nie, city auditor Stephen Mahere, city director of equity and inclusion Zaraya Fullston. And also want to take a moment to thank the city clerks' staff for putting all of this together and being very flexible at the last minute to move it around, as well as the city communications staff, and of course, our hosts, City Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Affairs, who work in this building every day and are making space for us here. Thank you all and a big hand for all city staff involved. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Reverend Michael Frazier, senior pastor of Mount Pleasant United Methodist Church. Pardon me. I am getting older, I recognize, so.
Pastor Frazier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Shall we bow our heads and unite our hearts in prayer? Our Father in God, we pause to recognize your power, your presence, and your purpose for our lives. We thank you for the many blessings that you continue to bestow upon us, blessing seen and unseen. And we come today to lift these, your public servants up before you. And we ask that you would grant them a spirit of cooperation, cohesiveness, to improve our collective and common cause as citizens of this city. We pray for peace all over the planet where people populated, and that your will will be done. And we'll ever be so mindful as to give you all the praise and the glory. Amen and amen.
To improve our collective and common cause. I love that. That's what we're here for. All right. With that, I will ask you all to please rise as we have the presentation of the colors Regents to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you would, please remain standing and join me in a moment of silence in recognition of President Jimmy Carter's passing. Amen. And for the first time at one of our swearing ends, at least for the first time in memory, we have musical accompaniment, and we will, I'll ask you to please remain standing for the National Anthem. Thank you. Please be seated. the Honorable Commissioner-elect James Ingle.
Good morning.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, James Ingle.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Honor, protect.
Honor, protect.
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
And government.
And government.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the state of Florida.
And of the state of Florida.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
To hold office.
To hold office.
Under the Constitution.
Under the Constitution.
Of the state.
Of the state.
And under the charter.
And under the charter.
Of the city of Gainesville.
Of the city of Gainesville.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Well and faithfully perform.
Well and faithfully perform.
The duties of commissioner.
The duties of commissioner.
On which I am now.
On which I am now.
About to enter.
About to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you all very much. When I was a kid, it never occurred to me, and I can't believe it would have occurred to anyone else, that I might hold elected office one day. We just weren't those people, you know? I was certainly raised in a very loving and supporting and caring household, but I grew up in a broke-down trailer at the end of a dirt road. Neither my father, nor his father, nor, as far as I can tell, anyone further down the line in the Ingle family had ever graduated high school. I was raised by a single mother, who has been an inspiration to me for my entire life. But the idea that I would hold for public office, it's just not the type of people I saw there. So when I was about 19, I moved to Gainesville, mostly because I wanted to get out of Orange Park and because my best friend was going to school here, but also because Gainesville had been this really magical place for me. You know, we had a lot of family here, we used to come visit when I was a kid, and I got to see with fresh eyes, over and over again, all the things that we kind of take for granted living here that make Gainesville such a special place. So when I moved down here, just through sheer dumb luck, I fell into an electrical apprenticeship program sponsored by the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers. With the exception of marrying my beautiful and awesome wife, that was probably the most consequential decision I ever made in my life, was to get involved with that apprenticeship program. Not only did it give me the confidence and the freedom that comes with knowing a trade, but it also gave me a way to earn a decent wage, to travel the country, and to provide for my family. More than that, it really got me involved in the labor movement, and that has been my life's passion ever since. Excuse me. So through the IBW and with the AFL-CIO, I've had the opportunity to go to Tallahassee to speak and kind of fight on behalf of working families from all over the state. I've also been able to work with our local government here, to try and pass ordinances and policies that kind of took some of the burden off of those struggling families. And what I learned in those experiences was there are not a lot of working-class people in the halls of government. You know, I saw that we had a lot of allies, especially here locally, and I saw that we had no shortage of enemies, especially in Tallahassee. But very few people had my experiences. So I saw a lot of MBAs, I saw a lot of lawyers, but I didn't see any tradesmen, I didn't see any waitresses. You know, and I saw business owners and professionals, but I didn't see bus drivers, I didn't see laborers. And that lack of voice has had real consequences, especially in the state of Florida. You know, if you, I think a great example of it is this last legislative session. The decision to eliminate all protections for workers out in the Florida heat, the decision to roll back child labor laws, those decisions got made by people that are so far away from the consequences of their decisions, they don't even understand what those consequences are. Like I said, you see a lot of wingtips up there, you don't see many work boots. Workers need representation in government, and experiences like that is what really inspired me to run, several times. So now that I have been elected, obviously, the question a lot of people ask me is, what do you want to do? What do you want to change? What do you want to get accomplished while you're up there? And having thought about that for a while, what I really want is I want for working-class people in Gainesville to have what I have. And that's a pretty impressive list. I've got a roof that doesn't leak. There's food in my pantry. I've got a car that starts every single time I turn the key. These boots on my feet are Thorough Goods. It's your good, quality, union-made boots. They're the type of boots where your back doesn't ache after working a full shift in them. Type of boots to keep your feet dry when it rains. When these boots wear out, I'm going to buy another pair. And when I do, I'm not going to have to do some quick math in my head, I'm not going to have to cross my fingers, I'm not going to have to pray to God that that car doesn't get declined. I want that for people, you know? It doesn't seem a lot to ask, but if you've never, if you've ever not had one of those things, you know what a big deal they are. So what I want for people in Gainesville is to not worry about falling off that edge they've been living on, and that's what I want to move forward with. Like a lot of problems in Gainesville, really, these are state and national issues that we're trying to solve with local actions, and that can be a hard thing to do. You know, when I look at the history of progress in the country and in the state and probably for all of human history, it's a story of two steps forward and one step back. So I think our job here is when those opportunities come along, that we can be in that part of the equation that's two steps forward, that we take that opportunity. The Gainesville continues to be a leader on environmental responsibility. We continue to be a leader on workers' rights through things like our wage-staff ordinances and our living wage policies. When we get to the other part of the equation, when it's time that the things around us are taking a step back, I think it's our responsibility here to be a citadel, a safe place, somewhere where we can hold the line. And regardless of whatever else is happening in the world, we can make sure that we still respect the environment. We can make sure that we still stand up for workers' rights. We can still make sure that our gay and lesbian and trans brothers and sisters can still safely be who they are and not live in danger. Because I think, excuse me, I think when times are darkest, that's the most important time it is to be a light. So if that's what this job can be, you're making progress when it's available, to stand up for people that need the help, hell, it's right up my alley. Very proud to be from Gainesville. You know, this is our city, right or wrong. When right, to be kept right. When wrong, to be made right. That's what I hope to do. I appreciate the trust that's been put with me from everyone, and I look forward to working with all of you to make this an even better city than it is.
Thank you, Commissioner Ingle, no longer Commissioner-elect. So next up, it's going to be a hard act to follow, Commissioner. Next up, as I'm sure she will have no trouble following that act, is Commissioner Desmond Duncan Walker being sworn in for a second term by the Honorable Judge Mishon Rawls.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Desmond Duncan Walker.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Honor, protect, and defend.
Honor, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government.
The Constitution and government.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the state of Florida.
And of the state of Florida.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
To hold office.
To hold office.
Under the Constitution.
Under the Constitution.
Of the state.
Of the state.
And under the charter of the city of Gainesville.
And under the charter of the city of Gainesville.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Well and faithfully perform.
Well and faithfully perform.
The duties of commissioner.
The duties of commissioner.
On which I am now about to enter.
On which I am now about to enter.
Congratulations.
To the captain of my ship, the lover of my soul, the author and finisher of my faith, my creator and the creator of all things. To my pastor, Michael A. Frazier, Senior, and my church family at Mount Pleasant United Methodist Church, and to my extended faith family from churches throughout this community, to my ancestors, who were taken from Africa, some lost in the Middle Passage, some who by miracle only survived. To my forefathers and foremothers, who were enslaved at Heel Plantation and other local plantations, whose blood, sweat, and tears are soaked into the soils of this city, whose hands built this town and the University of Florida, even though because of the color of their skin, they were not allowed to attend it. To the elders, who are the bearers of history, culture, and institutional knowledge, whose activism, intellect, business-savvy, religious leadership, community service, and love built strong communities in this city and propelled them forward. I honor your sacrifices. They will not be in vain. To the activists and community organizations, you are the lifeblood of this city. Thank you for walking with me, talking with me, for illuminating the voices of the marginalized and unheard, for fighting for social justice, and for sharing insight into the needs of this community. To my sorrows, I have seen a few, the illustrious ladies of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, I say skee-wee, y'all, and thank you for your support and your love. To my 2024 campaign team, many of whom were unable to be here today, some due to doctor's appointments, others due to work. For those who are here, would you please stand? I do see some of you, come on. Are you shaming me now? Oh, don't be ashamed now, it's too late. We're beyond that. Thank you. Thank you. It would have been robbery for me not to acknowledge you on this day, for you are in large part who made this possible. To the city of Gainesville, if you ever need somebody to fight for you, those are the people that you want to call. To my colleagues here at the Gainesville City Commission, both old and new, it is a privilege and an honor to continue this service, to continue to work with you to make Gainesville a beautiful place, a wonderful place, an equitable place for all. To the charter officers, your staffs, and the employees of this great city, you make everything go. I thank you for your service. I will continue to support you, I will continue to challenge you, I will continue to have an open door at all times, welcoming you in, to assist you in any way that I can. To my 98, soon-to-be 99-year-old grandfather, who is seated on the outside because we thought we would be on the outside today, and due to his mobility issues, it's a little more comfortable for him to be in the car. Mr. Collins Duncan, who actually worked in this building when it was the Thomas Hotel. I thank you, granddaddy, for living a beautiful life that has taught me that business is about relationships, and that it is most important to lead with human compassion. To my mother, who is seated in the car with him, Iris, also known as Superwoman, my teacher, my guide, my moral compass, my disciplinarian still, my supervisor, literally, y'all, she is my supervisor, and most of all, my best friend. I thank you, Mom, for instilling with me, in me, a strong work ethic, a love for humanity, and the understanding that people are always the priority. You have moved mountains out of my way so that I could serve not just at the family business, but so that I could serve as a public servant as well. You are both the businessperson and woman that I aspire to be. To my biggest fan, my daddy George, who is in the car with everyone else. You are the strongest person that I know. From the time that I sat on your shoulders as a little girl, to have a better purview of parades and anything that was happening in the community, I still sit squarely on your shoulders, with your strength supporting me in everything I do. I thank you for teaching me what protection is. I thank you for loving me with a steady hand, a consistent heart. Your resilience has been admirable. I will forever love you. To my grandmother, Gloria, who's watching this all from heaven, there is not a day that goes by that I don't draw on your wisdom, feel your presence, and that I don't hear the words that you taught me when I was just nine years old, words that have guided my public service and just about everything that I do. I have to live with myself, and so I want to be fit for myself to know. I want to be able, as the days go by, always to look myself straight in the eye. I don't want to stand with the setting sun and hate myself for the things that I've done, and I don't want to hide on a closet shelf a lot of secrets about myself. And fool- and fool myself as I come and go into thinking that nobody else will know the kind of person that I really am. I don't want to dress myself up in sham. I want to go out with my head erect. I want to deserve all men's respect. But here, in the struggle for fame and pelt, I just want to be able to like myself. I never can hide myself from me. I see what others may never see. I know what others may never, never know. I never can fool myself. And so whatever happens, I want to be self-respecting and conscience-free. Good morning, Gainesville. Good morning, Gainesville. Good morning, Gainesville. And Happy New Year. What a privilege and honor and a blessing it is to greet you in a brand-new year with a brand-new feel. Anybody feel a little bit different in 2025? Hopefully, you feel a little bit better. It's an honor for me to stand here today as your newly-elected District One Commissioner again. Someone shared with me that it has been roughly 13 years since District One has re-elected a city commissioner. On August 20th, 2024, District One, you re-elected me by 79, almost 80%. Wow. You might like me just a little bit. I am eternally grateful. To the voters, my generous donors, to my outstanding campaign team and my family and everybody who showed support in one way or the other. Even today, as I scan this crowd, I see supporters who have traveled from near and far to be here with me today. And my 99- or 98-year-old grandfather has always told me never to call names, y'all, because you always get in trouble. I do want to acknowledge, however, Chief Joseph Jenkins, who did travel from Orlando, Florida, former chief of police from the historic Eatonville community. We thank you so much for being here today. And a number of other friends and family who are here. In 2021, the beginning of my first term, I came to the Gainesville City Commission with a desire to be a voice for you. That was my slogan. And over the course of the last three years, I'd like to believe that I have been that. The city has faced tremendous challenges over those three years. But the city has also done some remarkable things in that time. I am proud to have stood with this city and to have declared gun violence as a public health crisis one year before it was done at the national level. That declaration, with the support of my colleagues, has allowed the proper resources to be put into place so that our charter officers and staff and so that our community members can properly address this critical situation. We did not do that alone. We called in our colleagues from across the street, and I thank you, Commissioner Cornell. I thank you, Commissioner Prizia. I thank you, Commissioner Mary Helen. I see those three of you, and if I cannot see anyone else from the City Commission, I do apologize, but I thank you all for standing with the city of Gainesville and also declaring gun violence as a public health crisis at the county. Your support and partnership in this effort is the only thing that is going to help us to address it with the proper resources. Santa Fe College has come on board as well. We have a Gun Violence Alliance and a Youth Steering Committee, all essential components of pulling community in in meaningful ways to help us move the needle. The interrupters, led by Caleb Young, who I see over to my left, and his staff, are a critical and effective piece of stopping violence before it happens and getting guns off of the streets. Additional staff, Brandy, Brittany, Cherie, all city staff that are working on the gun violence prevention and intervention efforts are doing an amazing job. And they're doing a lot, folks, with a little. And then there are those unsung heroes, those who work in the trenches, whose faces we don't see, whose names we may not know. I want you to know that I see you. I acknowledge you. Members of the Bold Program, members of a number of community organizations. As a matter of fact, if any of the individuals who are working in the community in the gun violence prevention and intervention space, if you are here, would you kindly just raise your hand or stand up? I would like for the community to see you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Absolutely. Thank you. Your work is making a difference. In the last two city commission meetings where we had had reports from the Gainesville Police Department, we have seen the difference that this collaborative effort is making. We have moved the needle, if only for a moment, on the issue of gun violence. And please know that our situation in Gainesville is much better. That's a good place to clap. And it's a good place to clap because along with the Gainesville Police Department and all of the partners that you just heard me name and countless other community organizations, we are beginning to see the change, but we know we cannot stop here. And so as I look into the faces of our other partners from the school board, from the Children's Trust, we look forward to future conversations and future efforts to make sure that we are able to continue this process. That first term was full of interesting things and serious conversations. The K-9 special meeting was one of those interesting conversations where a very critical issue was brought before the people at the request of the people. And I thank my colleagues for supporting me in making that meeting happen. But it happened at a time when Gainesville was in pain, when we needed solutions. I'm grateful that we had a police force who came to the table and was willing to make some changes. Changes have come. I'm grateful also to our current Chief of Police Nelson Moya. I don't see him in here today. He's at a conference. Thank you, Commissioner Book. But it's important to note that Chief Moya hit the ground running when he came to the city of Gainesville. He looked at our issues and he decided that a community approach was what he wanted to take. Already, he had my vote. At the end of the day, the best and the brightest, the leadership of our police department centers community. And that is something that is important to me. I am grateful for his leadership. I am grateful for everything that he is doing at the Gainesville Police Department, and I look forward to the continued progress. Places to go, things to do, mentors, and jobs have all been things that our young people have been telling us that they need to keep guns out of their hands, to keep them moving forward in a positive way. I am very proud to announce that in that vein and in that spirit of addressing places to go, things to do, mentors and jobs, a partnership with the Hippodrome has arisen. I'm grateful that Stephanie Lynch is opening the doors of the Hippodrome for the pilot program of the Cultural Arts Center to take place at the Hippodrome in 2025. It is going to happen. Amongst the many exciting things that we've been able to do in our first term, we've also been able to make necessary infrastructure changes in District One. Manager Curry, I thank you for coming and meeting with me, for listening to our neighbors, for helping us to improve our sidewalks in East Gainesville and throughout District One. It is making a difference. ADA ADA capability for our individuals and neighbors who traverse our communities in different ways has been improved as a result. The brand-new light and crosswalk in East Gainesville that is named after young Dylan Roberts. Make no mistake, that is the work of the city of Gainesville. And I am indebted to the staff who worked closely with me to ensure that we were able to bring the state in, to do their job, and help us to get the light there. As a result, now we have a community that sees that we will address their needs. A level of trust is beginning to take place as they recognize that your safety is our priority. In the midst of all of these wonderful improvements and things that we've been able to do, yes, there are still needs. District One still needs a grocery store. We need banks and financial institutions. And while we do have an urgent care, we do still need expanded health care in East Gainesville. Yes, ma'am. What I can say to you is that in this term, I renew to you my commitment to continue moving forward on those things. We may not be where we want to be, but thank God we're not where we used to be. I look forward to the next four years with hope. I look forward to the next four years with great expectation. And I believe in the very fiber of my being that the change that we want is truly going to come. A lot of it's already here. Thank you so much, Gainesville. I love you. It is my pleasure. Thank you for four more years.
Excellent. Congratulations, Commissioner Duncan Walker, on a second term. Wonderful. So there are a few things that I need to mention to you, a few housekeeping items, including the fact that, of course, Commissioner Cynthia Chestnut will be sworn in this afternoon at our business session via Zoom by the Honorable Michonne Rawls once again. She's unable to join us this morning, but I urge you to either join us live at the City Hall Auditorium or via Zoom or any of the variety of ways that we give you now to watch city commission meetings and take part in that swearing-in as well. I want to thank once again everyone for being here and staff for making this, I think, a pretty darn successful indoor ceremony. So, big hand for staff once again. And I notice that there are clouds rolling in, so good call, staff. I want to thank, again, I won't call everybody out by name, as we've been admonished by Commissioner Duncan Walker, who is absolutely correct. You start calling out by name, you're going to forget somebody. But there are representatives from Santa Fe College, from the University of Florida, from the the, there's a quorum of the Olatchua County Board of County Commissioners with us and of the School Board of Olatchua County with us this morning. The Children's Trust is represented, and many, many folks from across the community. So thank you for being here. And if you're watching online, thank you for taking time out of your day to do that. I want to, because I promised some folks that I would address this. I am personally reaching out to Florida Department of Transportation regarding some trees on University Avenue. Don't think that I have forgotten those trees that were taken down a few weeks ago. That is on my calendar. As part of that as well, I'm going to host some walking tours in the next few weeks up and down University Avenue with the very intent of looking at our sidewalks and our trees that are on University Avenue. We are Tree City. We will continue to be Tree City. So for those of you who had questions about that, make no mistake, we are still Tree City, and we will continue to take that all very seriously. We do have challenges, but I believe our opportunities are far greater than our challenges. And it is always important to remember how far we have come. We have been at this for quite a while as a different kind of city than most of the 412 cities in Florida. We are the 13th-largest city in Florida, and we do things a little differently here than most cities. And I'm real proud of the way that we do them. I'm proud of the way that you expect us as commissioners to do them. And most of the time, we keep up with that. I will tell you that this coming year, we will continue to lean in on gun violence. We've had great success through staff, through community involvement with curbing gun violence in our community, but we're not done. We will continue to lean into that. We will continue to lean into pedestrian and cyclist safety. We had tremendous success last year, but as we're reminded just a few days ago, success is only as good as the next moment. We will continue to do a better job of ushering in Vision Zero, as was brought to us by former Mayor Lauren Poe, who was with us this morning. And we will continue to work on the scourge of houselessness in our community. We have a responsibility to provide for everyone in our community. Those of us with the ability to show up here today and those of us who would not feel comfortable showing up today. Those of us who slept under a roof last night and those of us who did not have a roof to sleep under. We will continue to work with our partners harder and more diligently in this coming year. I promise you, we will continue to take homelessness, houselessness very seriously as a city government. I mentioned earlier, we all gave some time to the memory of President Carter. And I want to tell you, just as we close here, that my faith tradition and President Carter's faith tradition were the same. And that tradition calls for us to do two primary things, to love one another and to not embrace fear. That is a tall order. Both those things are a tall order here in 2025. There's a lot of uncertainty out there. But I can promise you that this commission, I feel comfortable speaking for us, will embrace loving one another across our community. We will continue to be a welcoming place for everyone who wants to be a part of this community. We will continue to work hard not to embrace fear. We will lean into doing the right work, and we all know what the right work is. We will continue to do those things. We will lead with love. But it would be an error for anyone to mistake that love for a lack of resolve. We are resolved to do the work, to accomplish the work. We are resolved to do the work, to accomplish the work that the people of the city of Gainesville elected us to do. And we will continue to do that work, one way or another. Love, embracing love and not embracing hate is the path forward for our city, for our county, for our state, for our nation, for our world. And we will lead in that direction. Thank you all so much, once again, for being a part of this ceremony today. I'm proud to be with you. I'm proud to be a part of the city of Gainesville and of this community. And with that, we will invite Mr. Garalus to give us one more musical reminder. Welcome, Commissioner Chestnut. Good to have you
Thank you.
at the meeting. In just a moment, we'll go through the rest of the agenda here. But I did want to recognize, before we get any further, that we do have with us the Honorable Michonne Rawls from the Eighth Judicial Circuit, who will be doing some work for us in just a couple of minutes. And we also are honored to have with us State Representative Yvonne Henson. Thank you and welcome back to the chambers that you're very familiar with. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, adoption of the agenda.
Sub move.
Second. Right, motion of the second to adopt the agenda as printed and distributed. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, oath of office for Cynthia Moore Chestnut at large, seat B, the Honorable Michonne T. Rawls, Eighth Judicial Circuit of Florida.
Very good, thank you. And Judge Rawls, if you would join us here at the lectern. And certainly not how we normally do things, but we have done a similar thing a few years ago during the pandemic when I was sworn in for my second term as a city commissioner online. And Commissioner Sacco was sworn in for her term online as well. So, we do have some precedent for this.
Okay, good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Commissioner Chestnut, are you able to hear me?
Yes, I can hear me.
I can.
Okay, good.
If you will raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Cynthia Moore Chestnut.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Honor, protect and defend.
Honor, protect and defend.
The Constitution and government.
The Constitution and government.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the state of Florida.
And of the state of Florida.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
To hold office.
To hold office.
Under the Constitution.
Under the Constitution.
Of the state.
Of the state.
And under the Charter.
And under the Charter.
Of the city of Gainesville.
Of the city of Gainesville.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Well and faithfully perform.
Well and faithfully perform.
The duties of Commissioner.
The duties of Commissioner.
On which I am now about to enter.
On which I am now about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Judge Rawls, thank you so much, once again. Commissioner Chestnut.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Judge Rawls and Rabbi, Mr. Mayor and my fellow commissioners. My deepest thanks to all of our neighbors in the city of Gainesville for allowing me to serve you one more time. You afforded me the highest honor awarded to a public servant, and that is to be re-elected without opposition. Over the next four years, I look forward to working with my fellow commissioners, charter officers and staff to deliver extraordinary services to address the issues of the day with a special emphasis on the Eighth Avenue and Waldo Road corridor, more affectionately known as Citizens Field. Join us on the journey. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Congratulations.
Thank you.